Good evening. Welcome to the school committee meeting of February 2nd, 2022. If you could all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you all for coming. We have a, I guess depending on your perspective, a relatively light agenda in terms of items. But I think based upon the amount of information, we have quite a bit to get through. So just kind of set some of the logistics for tonight in speaking with Jeff. So the committee is receiving these documents for the first time tonight. So for those, those in pub-- yeah, sorry.
Broadcast and recorded?
Uh, what's that?
Then we have to announce?
That it's broadcast and being recorded? I don't think so. Do we? Yes? Yes?
Thought we always did, yeah.
This, so just, I guess Fred just wants to make sure that everyone understands the meeting is being broadcast and recorded on WHCA and recorded for later purposes. David, are you on?
If, if he's on-- I know you're not going to do any voting necessarily--
Yeah. If he joins, we'll have to do that. So, good Fred, did I get most of it?
Yeah, I just wanted to--
Yeah, yeah. No, thank you.
Just so you two would have to--
Yeah, no, thank you. So just in terms of tonight's meeting, so this is the materials, the school committee's getting it for the first time. I think what Jeff has asked to do is be able to go through all of the materials, present them, and then we'll spend time, make sure that every member of the committee has an opportunity to either ask questions, comment, et cetera. We'll then open it up to public comment in terms of the public budget hearing, same thing. This is the start of the budget process, so the presentation's tonight, we will have time on the agenda next meeting to go through it as well. So, we do have one other agenda item at the end of the meeting, but with all of that being said, I will turn it over to Jeff in terms of the budget presentation, so.
Thanks, Chris. And please pardon my back. I hope you have, everybody has a copy or something. I'll be presenting up here for, for people at home, and I hope people can hear me. We do have a microphone here, so voices will be articulated a little bit louder. Before I present tonight, though, I just want the committee and the public to share some thoughts to Chris Gugans, our Dean of Students, who was hospitalized yesterday from school. He's in ICU, he's okay, but he had a major health episode here at school yesterday. So, I'm sending thoughts and prayers, and I know you all are, to his family and to his, his, his wife and two kids. So, good evening tonight, good evening. Tonight's our budget presentation, it's kind of opening it up. If you've been involved with our budgets in the past, it takes a while. This is just a global view of what we feel we need coming out of the gate for the FY-22, '23 school year, hopefully, hopefully getting back to somewhat normal. The past two years have been very difficult on us as a society, our community, our school, our school system, and especially our students. Masks, hybrid learning, remote learning, missing school days due to COVID, being ill, and quarantined have affected our students both academically, socially, and in ways that we have not yet determined. Things today are much different than they were prior to March 13th, 2020. Tonight, I'm going to present to the school committee a budget that adjusts to the needs of the post-COVID student, that works towards fulfilling the strategic plan and initiatives that supports the school committee goals and provides academic and social services to all 3,442 students in the Whitman-Hanson School District. I'd like to thank John Stanbrook, George Farrell, Lauren Matheson, and Michelle Lindberg for helping me to prepare this budget presentation and the multiple documents associated with the budget. I would also ask that members of the school committee and members of the public listen and absorb on what is presented and hold questions at the end, much like Chris said. I was reminded that I am the voice and advocate for our students. That is my responsi-- that is my responsibility to provide you a plan and budget that I believe is in the best interests of our students. Although the budget presented tonight doesn't get the district to where I think I'd like us to be, it's definitely a movement in the right direction for all of our kids. So, your first slide. This is our mission. The Whitman-Hanson Regional School District is committed to providing each student with a high-quality education that promotes student success and responsible citizenship. Our strategic plan, our hallmarks of our success, excellence in social-emotional learning, a PK-12 system of teaching and learning, safe and secure environment, operations, and community engagement. Our strategic objectives: Foster a learning environment that centers around social, emotional, and academic growth for all; Implement a PK-to-12 curriculum that is aligned and fosters students' learning for all; Establish an evidence-based three-year plan to address persistent disparities in achievement among student subgroups; Establish a safe and secure environment, learning environment, both physically and online; Increase engagement and communication with towns and community as it relates to activities and operations in Whitman-Hanson. The school committee worked diligently this summer in three subgroups, as voted on priorities to, to, to work on and provide me with some, some goal or some initiatives to work on in the '21-'22 school year and then in the '23, or '22-'23 school year. One of those initiatives is tuition-free full-day kindergarten, one-on-one student personal electronic devices, or Chromebooks for all, and a robust related arts program. Our budget timeline for FY-23 is pretty self-explanatory. We can meet all the way up until almost May 2nd. If we want to move meetings around, if we want to put things on the agenda, we can. I just listed dates, they're all Wednesdays. The big one for us as a committee is we have to send our budget to the towns by March 19th, and I took Wednesday, the 16th, as the vote to meet town meeting deadline. Our strategic initiatives that are not added in the FY-23 budget: Providing a robust related arts program in the middle school; The restoration of middle school foreign language; Establishing a uniform start time that is appropriate for all students; And restoration of a middle school reading support program. The goals and purpose of the FY-23 budget proposal for you: Supports the students' educational and district's operational needs; Maintains current staffing levels at pre-K to 12 and post-grads, I should put as well; Addresses academic and social, social-emotional regression due to COVID-19; Provides special education program to retain students from going out of district; Establishes tuition-free full-day kindergarten programming; Provides English-language learners the support they need for success; And commits to the one-to-one electronic device initiative. Increases to the FY-23 budget, anticipated, requested, and unanticipated: Contractual increases are staff, custodial, and transportation; Special education increases in contracted services; Insurance costs are up, moving staff from grants to the district budget; Building utilities have skyrocketed; 740,000-plus tuition for full-day K and two special education teachers. Unanticipated, and I'll get to this later, was an increase in the charter school tuitions per the state. What has happened over the past three years and into '22-'23? We have, and a lot of this is thank you to both communities and the school committee for supporting the budgets that have been presented. We have established a K-5 elementary math, English, and science program. We have established a middle school social studies program. We have provided adjustment counselors in every building. However, there were cuts for that, we reprioritized needs, and the foreign language middle school programs were cut. Adding special education teachers for co-teaching. Elementary class sizes are now under 21 in most classrooms. We have established a one-to-one student personnel electronic device program. We've added curriculum, translation services, and staff to service the growing English-language learner program, population, excuse me. Growing our special education programs to keep students in our district, reducing placement costs and transportation. And again, tuition-free full-day K. This is just a slide to give you an example, right off the DESI website, of our student-teacher ratio. It has gone down over time, and with the additions of staff over the past couple of years in '20 and '21-'22, this should continue to be reduced. We are at 14.6 to 1. The only districts in our area that are larger are Bridgewater-Ranham and Abington. State average is 13.4 to 1, but look at our other localities, we're relatively close. We're better than we were, and I thank the communities for supporting our budget in the past. We can be better. Enrollment trends: Our district enrollment is, is dropping, however, and I don't have the NESDEC report, which I will post in the Dropbox and for the public to see, you will see that we are starting to stabilize in our elementary grades. And over the next five years, you will see a decrease in our high school population because our elementary grades have stabilized. This report where it says estimated on the last line, 2022, was 3404, or actually 3442. That number came from, from the state, that's what's used for the assessments today. But you will see that we have dropped in enrollment. However, as we lose students, we will utilize teachers that we have through attrition. If they retire, we might not replace. If they retire, we might replace in a different area, such as kindergarten, such as preschool, such as middle school programming, such as related arts. So we will use, utilize our, our teacher population as they go and, and start swapping folks around to meet the current need of our student. So, every year around June, people start asking about class size, class enrollments, and it's hard to determine because you will see enrollment is fluctuating. So I had our data person run me our enrollment since 10/1. So you will see that we've had 65 students enroll since October. That's unplanned for in February when we do budget, that's unplanned for when we determine class size or computers for our students. Duval School had the most students enter this, this, this past six months, and a majority of those students were English-language learner students. The next slide shows withdrawals. So if we add, we will subtract. Schools are, people move, many things happen, but people move. So we lost 35 students. You'll see the majority were lost at the high school. Duval only lost three, so the net for Duval was, you know, 14 students, but we lost 35 for a net of 30 new students since October. That's difficult for, for principals, that's difficult for the superintendent when he's presenting the budget for FY-23. If that trend hits, if I get another 30 students next fall, things might be different. This is why enrollment is, is difficult, or projections are challenging at best because we do have a fluctuation. And we'll have more students withdraw before June, and we'll have more students enroll prior to, prior to the end of school. Thanks to the work of this committee and through attrition and through lowering of, of our student population, our projected class size is what I think is extremely manageable now going forward. You will see that I'm projecting, again, I hate to project in February, but I'm projecting based on what I have for figures now. Duval's class sizes won't be more than 19 next year, and they might be more, you know, a couple of kids might move in. Indian Head's looking at 20 as a top, Conley's looking at 21, and that's their bubble year is going to go. Whitman Middle is, is 20 to 22 in academics, but that's going to be pretty close to related as well. The bubble class is moving out of Whitman Middle. And Hanson Middle School is, is 20 to 22. High school's still averaging, it depends on what class you take, you might have a class of 15 and you might have a class of 27. Foreign language at the high school is going to be a problem again, I can, I already know, but as we go with diminishing student population, those classes might even out. Special education, and I'm going to have Lauren come up in a minute, but special education is a large part of our budget. Just to be clear and let folks know, we have 660 students currently enrolled in an individual education plan. That means they have additional services outside of, of a traditional student. They have an IEP. Full inclusion, we have 80% of our, of those students, 456 are full inclusion. What is full inclusion? Full inclusion means that you are getting your IEP services delivered in a classroom, meaning you might have a special education teacher working with you outside the classroom, there might be a paraprofessional in the classroom, there might be a co-teacher, spoke about co-teaching, in the classroom. But this student is receiving special education services inside the classroom and might have some, some help, a strategy center outside in their schedule. We have 40, 95 students, or 79, 40 to 79% of our students are in partial inclusion. What's partial inclusion? That means they're in a classroom, but they're also receiving direct special education services outside the classroom with a special education teacher. So 95 of our students in district are, are partial inclusion, substantially separate. We have 78 students substantially separate. That means that they're in a program. That means that they might go out for a related, they might not, it depends on their IEP, but they are receiving direct instruction from a special educator and usually with para-support. And then we have 41 students placed in, in out-of-district. Those are private, out-of-district, those are residuals, those are hospital placements, and those are our collaboratives. With that, I'm going to ask Lauren to come up and talk a little bit about our, about our programs.
Good evening. So earlier this year, I, a group of us did a presentation on all of our special education programs for the committee, so I'm not going to re-go over all of them, but if you look up at the screen, you'll see kind of the chunking of programs that we have here in district. And the goal for me is to ensure that we have programming here in this district that is a continuum that meets the services from pre-K to 22-years-old so that we can keep as many students as possible in the district and we can educate them in the least restrictive environment. So that's my goal. And as you can see, right now, we happen to have two gaps in that programming for our students. And it's programming for students with autism that require that substantially separate program that Jeff just spoke of. We have lots of students on the autism spectrum in the district that are, some are inclusion, partial inclusion, but this specific need is for a very small number of children who have significant needs in relation to their autism, and they need a substantially separate program. The need right now is at the middle school and at the postgraduate level, so the 18- to 22-year-olds. So what has happened in the past is, because it's a, it's a small amount of students that fall in this category, there's often gaps in the students that we have in the district. So we used to have a middle school program, and we didn't have a high school program because that's the age of our students. And those students have all now moved up to the high school, we've had a gap, about three or four-year gap, and now our elementary students are moving up into the middle school age, so we need a program for them. And then some of our high school students are moving up into the 18- to 22-year range. So, in addition to having programming in district, in addition to keeping them here because it's the least restrictive environment, it also makes the most financial sense when you look at tuition costs and transportation costs of what it would cost the district to send these students out of district, it makes sense for us to create these programs. So when I look at this list and I see all the things that we've done over the years after these two programs are in place, I see a full continuum of services for all of our students that meet really all of the learning needs that would come up in the district, and I feel like we have a really solid continuum of services. Did you want to just jump to ELL while I'm up here, or?
Explain to the folks outside the committee what a BCBA is.
So, a BCBA is a behaviorist. It's a board-certified behaviorist, that's what those acronyms stand for, but we, pre-pandemic, students had behavioral and emotional challenges, and what we're finding is post-pandemic, especially with the younger kids who didn't have, they, they started their education not in a traditional classroom, they have had a really difficult time making that transition. Our behavioral needs are up, and we have currently, right now, a need at Indian Head, we're currently using contracted services for BCBA or behavioral support there, but the needs are growing across the district, and I would like to see us shift and have another full-time BCBA. We're still not one-to-one in the buildings, there's going to be some sharing of them, but it will help us support students who have emotional and behavioral challenges so that we can keep them in that inclusion environment as much as possible, or so that we can support them in a TLC program here in district, which is our therapeutic learning center. So that's what that support is.
And why is it important to have a school psych in it?
Well, the school psychologists do all of the assessments of the students who are on IEPs, and the laws and regulations require that we test these, test students every three years who are on IEPs, and then we are, we actually have a really high number right now, again, post-pandemic, of new referrals for students who have some lagging skills and have been referred for special education testing. So we're keeping our school psychologists really busy between assessment, and then also they oftentimes are linked to the social-emotional goals on the IEP, and they're providing that direct service in addition to school adjustment counselors, providing that direct service to students who need counseling support.
So, I mentioned English-language learners, ELL falls under Lawrence's purview of, of, under Lawrence's purview of Director of Student Services. You will see from that box that, beginning in September, we had 70-plus students, which was more than we had prior to, and our ELL numbers have jumped to over 113, Lauren, you can--
Yeah. So we've, over the last really four years, we've had a consistent increase in growth in our, in our ELL population. But really, what I'd like to draw your attention to is from September till now, and we're not sure if this is a new trend, if it's going to stay consistent, but it has been a huge jump to what we're used to. So we've welcomed 44 English learners to our district from the start of school till now. So as you can imagine, our, our ELL teachers and tutors are very stretched trying to meet the needs of all these students. And the other thing that has happened this year, mid-October-ish, is we officially moved from a low-incidence district, which is anything under 99 students, now that we're up over 100 students, we're a moderate district. So there's different requirements that DESI has for us, there's instructional time, English instructional time that's required of us to provide, and as you can see from the numbers, the high school, Duval, and Conley have taken the biggest numbers of students. And currently, right now, we are struggling to meet those instructional demands, especially at the elementary level. So the two additional ESL teachers would be for the Conley and the Duval schools to meet the growing number of students that are moving into those particular districts. We, we sat down as an elementary team with all of the teachers and the administrators, and we looked at scheduling. What we're able to do at the high school and middle school level is to schedule in the ESL services, which is great, it doesn't interrupt the student's day, it's built into their schedule, and now that we have this growing need at the elementary level, we're looking to do the same thing. And we sat down, we looked at scheduling, we looked at staff needs, and in order to meet those minutes that we are now required to meet, we really need two teachers in each of those buildings to, to staff all of the students.
So where we looked at providing those two teachers are out of federal funds, we didn't add those two teachers to the district budget, and the reason I'm saying is, I don't know if this is a bubble or not, and I didn't want to commit district funding to potentially a bubble of a, of a student group. Positions funded outside the LEA budget, FY-22, we had 72.78. FY-23, I'm looking at 66.78. I'll draw your attention to the FDK revolving down in the center of the page. We went from, we're looking at, we're moving eight staff members from the FD, from, from 22 and revolving to absorbing that in the district budget. 42 staff members in FY-23 will be coming from ESER 2 and ESER 3, and George is going to speak a little bit about ESER. Our food services is self-funded revolving, they have 33 full and part-time employees, and our driver's education is, is self-funded. So these are all grants and self-funded programs. You will notice that we pay for five teachers through school choice, and I have a slide on school choice later on. What can ESER be used, or ESER 3 be used for? Instructional and professional staff, i.e. school physicians and nurses, instructional coaches, instructional coordinators or team leaders, and special educators. Can also be used to support, support staff salaries, non-clerical, paraprofessionals, and instructional assistants. MTRS, which George will explain, stipends, teachers for instructional staff and support staff, contractual services, cleaning or facilities, instructional services, curriculum, substitute teachers, short and long-term. Additional uses are supplies and materials, testings, meaning testing and assessments, other instructional materials, textbooks or software, or general classroom supplies, or they're broad and they say other costs, maintenance or tech, of technology, maintenance of equipment, lease of equipment, and purchase of equipment. More detailed positions funded outside the LEA budget, two ESER slides coming up, Title 1 Part A, or Title 1, two teachers at Duval and two, 2.2 teacher, 2.5 teachers at Whitman Middle School. Title 1 has diminished over time. IDEA, which is the grant IDEA for special education, two Conley teacher, or two Conley staff members, three Duval staff members, one Indian Head staff, staff member, one high school, or four high school staff members, one preschool academy staff member, and 1.5 coordinators, 6 through 12. Early childhood sped, .33 of an FTE, preschool academy teacher. Our 21st century grant is funded .2 of, of the FTE coordinator. School choice, again, it's, right now, it's five high school staff members. Full-day K revolving, right now, funds eight FTEs, or full-time employees. Preschool academy, 2.75 staff members are outside the budget, that's revolving, tuition revolving. Food services, 33, and one driver's ed. Turn it over a little bit to George right now to talk a little bit about that, too.
Evening, folks. How are you all? So, somewhere under other duties as assigned, grants became something that I take care of. I would like to say I'm getting better at them, I think the help of John Stanbrook and the help of John Tuffey before has made it so, but they're a multifaceted process. Obviously Jeff talked about a lot of grants that we have, some are yearly. However, we also have multi-year grants, and the multi-year grants we have right now are ESER 2 and ESER 3. And it's funny, we use the word ESER now for over two years, but it actually stands for the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Act. Two years ago, we started with an ESER 1. Most of that was used for Chromebooks. Now we're into ESER 2, and then we'll move into ESER 3. They're running concurrently now, but they have different end dates. ESER 3 was 1 million, 100, 1.1 million was in ESER 2. That needs to be spent and allocated by 9/30/23. If, I want to call your attention first to the right-hand side. So to the right-hand side, when this grant was written, and again, it's a multi-year grant, and you write the grant before the monies are actually given to you, and there are serious stipulations on how to spend it. So once you go through all the stipulations, and you sit with a team, and you decide what it is you feel best you're going to do, you have to send that grant to your local rep or your area geographical designee at DESI. We have one, he's been there for years, he's been a great help, and then you sort of go back and forth, like, hey, that doesn't look good on that one, can you use it for this? You're going to have to check this, and we go through this process until finally, he says, you get the golden stamp of approval, and you can execute it. And then there are serious times throughout, once that money is designated, that you can call down or draw down on that money, and that's through a process called Grantium, and that's what DESI controls, that software database, I guess you would, where we can apply for these funds. But when we did ESER 2, we allocated $577,000 to professional staff, we allocated another 227 to support staff. And MTRS, and it's funny because we use acronyms, and we should actually tell you everybody what those are, that's the Mass Teachers Retirement System. In a grant, you have the ability to charge to the grant the amount of money for the people you allocate, what you would pay for things like their retirement, and things like even health benefits if you so choose. health benefits if you so choose. So that total comes out to $876,000. Over the course of the span of the grant, the grant, that can go to what we'll call humans. That can go to humans. The remaining money, 10,000 has to be for mental health supports and approximately 115,000 for supplies and materials and ed tech. And again, we already used those in ESER II to do some of our Chromebooks that we need. If I could take you back all the way to another acronym, when we were doing the summer programs and entering our first meeting this year, we had the ECF Fund. That was the Emergency Connectivity Fund. That was another grant. From that grant, we were able to secure, from this grant and from that grant, we were able to secure almost eight hu, almost, about 960 new Chromebooks. And in a further slide, you'll see why that's apparent. But for our FY '22 professional staff, we now have two district elementary intervention positions. We have a Conley staff position, we have an Indian Head staff position. In the support staff, we have things like Lauren talked about and Jeff talked about in a post-COVID world, where we've allocated monies for paraprofessional support. Those paraprofessional support could come in the way of paraprofessionals for special ed, paraprofessionals for regular ed, or even building subs if needed. And in next year professional staff, we have one district elementary intervention position. Now, you're probably thinking, well, there's still extra money in there, why aren't we doing that? Or why aren't we spending more on the human capital? Because again, when you write any multi-year grant, you, you write a grant for the future that you don't know yet is there. So as clarity becomes, as issues come up, as things take place, it was, it's fiscally prudent to have a reserve so that, once that reserve is hit, if you need it, you have it. If not, that reserve then has the ability to change in the grant and you write what are called amendments. Amendments are the same thing like when you get the grant. You have to ask DESI if this is okay. I'd like to move this from this, I'd like to move it over here. And in the remaining part of ESER II, not so much because we've spent that, but when we look to ESER III, you will see that there, there is extra money unaccounted for in materials and supplies and things of that nature. And when I get to that, I'll explain a little bit more. If we flip the page and go to ESER III, that's a $2.3 million grant. That has to be spent now by, that has to be allocated by September 30th of '24. So that's a year later. If I can take you to the right again, same process for writing the grant, except this time, ESER III was written and due without necessarily a lot of rules at the time. One of the rules, you might remember, we had to do a survey, we had to solicit community support, we had to make sure stakeholders had a say, and then we sat down as a team and we went through it. And of this grant, 987,000 are for professional staff. Professional staff being teachers, administrators, anyone within, anyone above a teacher or above is what professional staff is. We then allocated 460,000 in support staff. And the support staff allocation, or some detail on that, is additional duty aides per building, additional inclusion in special ed powers, and then building subs as needed. Same as the first part. MTRS for the people that we designated also, and then professional development and stipends. So what does that mean? Now remember, this was a post-COVID world and this is for the years to come in a post-COVID world. So there's a lot of professional development that has to happen because we changed basically on a dime into a one-to-one district. Slowly, not really a dime, but we changed to a one-to-one district. So as a result, there's professional development that needs to come with that. There's professional development that we offer, there's professional development that our people offer and get reimbursed for, there's professional development that we partake in from other companies. And there's also going to be a lot with Google because now Google is the platform that we are moving to. Also included in those professional development stipends are lead teacher professional development. As we talk about moving into different parts of the curriculum, we now have a heavy emphasis on the technology aspects of the curriculum because students have Chromebooks. So there's money set aside for that. And also, two months ago, I began the Summer Enrichment Plan. I, I talked about that here. That was $91,000, $94,000 that we had set aside for schools and staff, and then there's also transportation that's in that. Now, the remaining 582,000 is in contracted services for supplies and materials in the area of secondary curriculum and technology. Now, again, some of this is unaccounted for at this point in time. It's allocated, but it has yet to be spent. And the reason being is that when we talk about how many, the human capital, when we talk about how many teachers we're going to need, when we talk about the ability to expend these funds after, through that series of amendments that I talked to, the goal is, is to make sure we can finish the Chromebooks that we need so we can get on a cycle that's budgetarily, fiscally sound for the years to come. If all of these aspects of the 582,000 remaining dollars aren't used, you can write amendments and then you can change how you use that money, and that would go to the final push to get to the rest of the Chromebooks we need to keep this going and then secondary curriculum. Because in case you don't realize it, I got here in 2004 and we have yet to update a middle school piece of curriculum since that time. The caveat being is that last year, we purchased Social Studies in Grade Six and Seven. We didn't purchase it in Grade Eight because after working with the staffs, and now civics is a part of Grade Eight, so that was sort of prescriptive from the state. So we were able to do that. If I look to the left now on your slide, and I can be a little more detailed on the professional staff that we have in FY '22, that services a technology coach, that services a secondary interventionist. The FY '23 staff that this already service, services will be the technology coach, two secondary interventionists, and one of those would be new because as we've seen, we only have one secondary interventionist right now that handles both subjects. That has proven to be very difficult. So we'd have a math and we'd have an ELA. That is another one of the elementary interventionists. And then some of the things that Lauren talked about with Jeff, which would be the two district EL teachers and one district BCBA. And again, the reason for this is in a post-COVID world, this money's available for the needs of the students as they re-enter school and as they continually go through this pandemic. So we're not sure if this is, hey, this is what we need now and it's a transient issue? Or we're not sure if this is something that we actually need to implement and move forward. But the ability of these grants to be there, the ability for us to structure it in such a way and then still have flexibility through the life of the grant has really been beneficial to what it is that we do. Now, you might be saying, it might not be that good for fiscal '23 evening, but you have to remember, these are multi-year grants. So it's not like if it's a Title I grant where you get it every year, if it's a Title II grant, you get it every year. This is your writing for the future. We have the ability to change and adapt, we have the ability to see what takes place, but for right now, this is our most prudent, fiscally sound piece that we felt we needed in order to write these grants and help the kids as they transition back to school full-time. Want to keep going? Okay. Chromebook needs. So I've primed the pump a little bit and Chromebook needs. So again, the only way we were able to offer a one-to-one, and again, since 2004, we've done every rendition of how to get kids' devices in their hands, was with the electron, was with the ECF grant, was with ESER I, and now is going to be the next piece. So we have approximately 3,800 Chromebooks in the district. Now, when you have 3,800 Chromebooks in the district, you're going to say, well, that's more than every child needs. And you know what? You're right. Except sometimes they break and sometimes they're not there, and sometimes you need a loner, and sometimes you lose the keys, and sometimes you lose a cord. So there has to be some in the tank so that we can make sure that students get what they need. But we will need to replace 1,500 Lenovo N42 Chromebooks, which are end-of-life for July of '22. Our goal is to replace them with, with HPs, and what's nice is we were able to work with Hewlett-Packard because Hewlett-Packard is now, has like a train-the-trainee piece where now we have the ability to fix some of those things right with our tech department. This will allow us to get on a cycle of approximately $265,000 per year as a replacement cost for one-sixth of our inventory moving forward. Because 265,000, we're trying to find the number that says, how do we do this? Do we do this through additions to the budget? Do we do this through cuts in our other lines to make this available? Do we do this through an E&amp;D ask? How do we do this? But if you can go back to where we were with the ECF grant, Google came out with end-of-life. So these machines go end-of-life. And the reason why they go end-of-life is not because you can't use them to surf the internet, it's because you can no longer use them for testing, assessments, or the curriculum that we now have. So as a result, we are losing, we are losing about 1,400 right now in June. We have those. We're slowly replacing those. However, our next wave is in '26, which we will now need to start planning for the next 1,500. You're then going to get half then into '29. But a $600,000 hit or a $650,000 hit doesn't seem right when all of a sudden it's like, oop, now we need 650,000. So what we're trying to do is get on a fiscal cycle of where we can earmark that money, keep that money, but now know that yearly we're putting that through. So hopefully, when the '26s are up, we might be into the year of expiration in '34. But now we can plan for that but not have to take that big chunk there. I don't have all the answers, but that is what we've decided that we feel is best in order to move forward at this time.
And the Chromebook needs right now, the recommendation on our behalf is to use some of our excess and deficiency money to support that along with federal funds this year to purchase what he needs. Nothing is in the LEA budget for Chromebooks next year as replacements, but we're, we're kind of pushing it off to say, by '26, we could not put anything in FY '24, nothing in FY '25, and we're going to get hit with a pretty large chunk of replacement in '26. We didn't choose to make them end-of-life. That's something I think the company did, and I think they, they saw the need for Chromebooks across the world and now have shifted a little bit.
And I think the one last thing I'd like to leave you with is when you talk about the ESER II and the ESER III funds, the remaining ESER II and III funds, you have the ability through amendments to, in order to get some of that money from there, whether it's curriculum or technology. You can't get it all because there are ramifications and there are stipulations, but that's what that bevy or that safety net, or that fiscal security is also there. So I leave you with that. Thank you. You got to flip.
Full Day K implementation. One of the school committee goals, one of my goals, we've done some research. I think it's been on the docket for quite a while. This is what we have to replace. Five teachers and three paraprofessionals that are paid for from our current revolving fund. After a needs assessment based from the three elementary principals, they need one more classroom per, so addition of three teachers and three pairs. So we're looking for a total of 740, 807, 27 to implement Full Day K in the FY '23 budget. I told you I was going to mention school choice a little bit. Currently, we are open to school choice at the high school for grades nine and 10, and we allow students to stay if they transition out of, out of our district until they graduate. We are at a total of 59 students in district for school choice. I don't know if those are first year this year, but you can see the trend from 2016 to, and 2016, '17 to 21, '22. We've remained relatively close to that 50. Some years are up, some years are down, but currently we have 59 students in district. And I do have some, some numbers. I think we're expecting a little over $300,000 to, to come back to the district through school choice revenues. Chris?
That's the total, not the net, right?
That's the total number. 59 kids are in our district right now.
Not counting, not, you're not looking at.
I'm, I don't, I don't have the exact number. I have a financial number going out.
Gotcha.
And I'll show that. So next slide, school and charter school, school tuitions. School choice tuition in FY '22 was 200, and when I say tuition, that's what we expended. That's what's going in the district budget. 258, 60 was FY '23, '22. Projected from the state right now is 222, 684, and I'm expecting 309, 154 coming back in school choice revolving. Again, those are your five teachers, folks. Charter school tuition, this is unexpected, and I had put that slide up there. FY '22, we expected 814,154 to go out in charter school tuition. The, the state numbers that came to John last week for FY '23 was 1,043, 981, or 229,827 increase of charter school tuitions. We do get some back, but that doesn't cover that. And that, and folks, it's, when I say school choice going out, I can't prohibit somebody from going out and I can't prohibit somebody from going to charter schools. So that's an unexpected increase and a hit to our budget. Per pupil spending, I'm not going to harp on per pupil spending, we've talked about that a lot. It's gotten much better and I appreciate the communities for, for moving forward. But this is just roughly what area schools are spending per pupil and what the state average is. And again, I discount some of the state average because you're looking at small communities, very wealthy communities, it's just an average. But we're at, in 2020, we're at 13,4, 13,340 in per pupil spending from 17 to 20 as on the DESI website. I've given you a list of final budgets from 14 to 22. Percentage increases every year, and this year, I'm looking for a budget to be approved, 58,939,591, or 3.7 increase to the LEA budget. And I'll explain some of that later on, but I'm going to call up Mr. Stanbrook to talk about some of his graphs, his numbers, and how he got there. So John, can you have a mic there too?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just, I'm going to get a plug in for, there are 26 financially related documents on the, on the school district's website, and the website is whrsd.org backslash school underscore committee underscore budget backslash budget. So there's, these are on there along with a lot of other ones as well. So the, the first slide here is just a graph on the general revenue, general fund revenue by town. Thank you. General fund revenue by town, and this is, it just shows a total Whitman assessments would be around 17,000, 30, 30%. Hanson's 23%. It just breaks down the general fund revenue by, by the town and other revenue and, you know, state aid and, and other things there. The second slide is, oh, is the general revenue, the general fund revenue for fiscal year '23 by type, being, you know, what kind of, what kind of revenue is it? Either operating assessments are 51% or 30 million, and the total state aid revenue is 26 million or 44.5%. Again, the, it's easy to see here that between operating assessments and state aid revenue, that's 95% of the budget. That's pretty much it. Everything else is kind of just, the other 5% there. The next slide is a breakdown of the projected fiscal year '23 general fund expenditures by function. Again, these are DESI functions and they go from administration to at, at 2%. I'm going to need my glasses because it's small print. Operations and maintenance is 8%. Again, instruction is 54.88. That's the, the big one and that's the way it should be because that's, this is a school and we should be instructing the children. The next slide is a hold harmless slide. What's hold harmless? I'm trying to say it so I don't have my Boston accent, and it's hold harmless. So the, I'm going to try to say that as many times as I can here. So the Student Opportunity Act was passed in 2019 that made significant changes to the Chapter 70 formula. The new formula guarantees a minimum aid provision that says the districts that would have lost funding using the new formula will be held harmless, which means that they will not have a reduction in funding, and they'll at least get an additional $30 per pupil each year. So that's what we, in, in the governor's budget, that's, that's a projection of we're getting $30 per pupil and that's it, and we won't get any more until the hold harmless aid meets. And the, the formula for hold harmless is the prior year's chapter 70 aid minus the current year's foundation aid. So until that becomes zero, we will not get any other, any other increases in chapter 70. So we just move on to, so, so these slides are the assessment calculations for fiscal year '23. They're, again, they're all on the website. A, I'm going to have to, I left that over there, so I am going to have to go here. So, okay, no, I've got it. So, thank you. So first step is the general fund budget minus the transportation and general fund capital. That's the first step in how to come up with the assessments for both towns. The budget total is 58,939,59170, and then you, you minus out transportation costs, high school debt, service. I'm, I'm not going to go through every line, but the, the math there gets an assessment subtotal of, I'm going to round the numbers off, 56.4 million. So then the next slide would be step two, which is that assessment minus other budgeted revenues. That equals the net school spending budget. Other budgeted revenues are revenues that we can generate on our own or come from somewhere else that come to us. So for, here, I listed the local revenue, which is made. So for here, I listed the local revenue, which is Medicaid reimbursement. It's also state revenue. Those are all the revenue that we're likely to get in fiscal year '23. Then you minus out any interest income. Use of excess and deficiency is a local source, so that's in there. Bond and band premiums, I think we, at a previous meeting, we talked about some money that's, a small amount of money that's set aside for doing that. And then there are some adds, but I've already included that in the overall budget, so they don't, they don't, they don't factor into the equation. The total net school spending budget amount is 29.9 million there. The next step is step three. That's the net school spending budget minus the required minimum contribution equals the additional assessment. We start with that 29.9 million, and then we take the Hanson required minimum contribution and the Whitman required minimum contribution. Those are amounts that DESI calculates. They're on their website. They're on, they're on our website as well under those documents I was talking about. Hanson's required minimum contribution is 10.1, rounding the numbers. Whitman is 11.96, 11.97. So that, the total amount, additional amount to be assessed after you subtract that is 7.8 million. So then we go to step four, which is we determine the students from each town and the percentages. So Hanson has 1,356 students, according to DESI website, and Whitman has 2,086 for a total of 3,442. So the percentages there are 39.4 for Hanson, 60.6 for Whitman. Then we move on to step five, which is we take the additional amount to be assessed of each, from each town, which was 7.8 million from the step, whenever, the two steps ago, and then we apply that percentage, and that, those are the amounts for Hanson, 3 million, and 4.7 for Whitman. And then step six is to determine the transportation operational assessment, which is the transportation budget of 1.84 million. Then you take away state revenue, which is 843,000 of regional school transportation reimbursement, and then we take out non-mandated busing because those are assessed separately, 487,000 for Whitman, and Hanson is 121,000. And then we apply that, that final dollar amount, 390,000 or so, 390.7,000, and then we apply the student percentage for the, to split it up between the towns. So additional assessment for transportation is 153.9 for Hanson and 236.8 for Whitman for the total of 390. And then the final slide that we have up here is you determine each town's operational assessment, which is general plus the transportation. So that's the required minimum contribution for Hanson is 10.1. The additional assessment from earlier, earlier up on the slides, step five, 3.076, and then the additional assessment transportation assessment from steps, I'm sorry, step five and then step six, gives a total operational assessment of 13.37 to $1076. And again, Whitman, same thing there, 11.9 plus 4.7 plus 236,000 is 16.936 million. So there's, again, on the website, there are more. There are other steps to come up with the amounts for the non-mandated busing assessment. That was just a straight ridership split as of December 16th. That's the date that we took the ridership. And then there, on the website, there's another way to come up with the general fund and the capital projects funds assessment. So if you, people could take a look at that and if they have any questions, we can go there. So, so the other special revenue funds that are in, sorry, yeah, other special revenue funds that are in the budget. So circuit breaker is in there, and that's state reimbursement for sped costs. Again, on the website, there's a breakdown of every grant and every special revenue fund that we use, and that's what I'm reading from now. So the, the circuit breaker amount in fiscal year '21 was 1.3 million. In fiscal year '22, it's going to be 1.7 million. Again, I'm rounding the numbers off. And then a projected amount next year for 1.8 million. Again, I just, we haven't put in for anything. That's just a number, the placeholder number for right now. We don't know if that's a good number or not, but I had to put a number in, and that's what the number I put in. For school choice, that's state revenue from sending districts. We had revenue of '21 of 279,000, and that was five people and five FTEs. I like to have columns, and you'll see it on my sheet on the website, that, I like to have columns of people and columns of FTEs. I know FTEs is the normal way to measure things, but I don't like calling people .33 of a person. You're one person. You just happen to work a third of the, of the time of a full-timer. So you'll see the column, columns where I have people and FTEs. Going back to school choice, for '21, we have five people and five FTEs in '21. In '22, the budget is 279,000. Again, five, five people, five FTEs. And in '23, the projection is 309,154, which again is five people and five FTEs. And then the last one was preschool academy. That's the preschool program we have. We have five, in '21, we received 124,411 in revenue, and we, that was five people and three and a half FTEs. This year, the projection is 150,000 in revenue, four people or 2.75 FTEs. And then in '23, the projection is another 150,000, the same thing as in '22, four people and 2.75 FTEs. So those are what we use in the, for other funds in the budget, not in the general fund. And then finally, the last slide I have is the excess and deficiency usage in fiscal year '23. So the beginning balance is 1.868318. That's the E and D amount that was certified back in October by the Department of Revenue. The proposed usages as of right now are 123,885 to pay off year two and three of our Whitman water bill settlement, to use half of the full-day kindergarten startup of 740,000 or so, or 370,40364 to fund half the full-day K this year, and then try to fund more in outgoing years. And then also to use $400,000 in Chromebook purchases, as Mr. Farrell was talking earlier about trying to catch up on the needs that we have on the one-to-one devices. So the total potential uses as of today for E and D are 894,28864 with an ending balance of 974,000. And again, there is more on the website if you, if you care to see it. And the last one, turn it back to you.
Thanks, Sean. So getting towards the end a little bit, I gave, since full-day K is the most expensive nut up here, and we're talking about it quite a bit, and it's been a goal of the district for a while, and I think it's a topic of conversation in both communities, we looked at three options of funding full-day K. I took the one right in the middle, and John explained to you a little bit about using some E and D. So again, I'm just going to go scenario one. Cost is 740,80727, using zero E and D. The Whitman operating assessment would be 17,160,99387. The Hanson operating assessment would be 13,5180380. That's for FY '23. Last year's operating assessment in Whitman was 16,104,90322. Hanson's operating assessment was 12,646,11772. The increase to Whitman would be 10,56--
I think that--
I'm sorry, it's right. 1 million or 1,05609065. It was like $10 million. Wow. Woo, sorry about that. Right, right. And Hanson's increase would be 87192208, with a Whitman increase in percentage over last year, or a percentage decrease of the assessment of 6.56% and a Hanson increase or Hanson assessment of 6.89. Again, overall budget would be 3.7. Using the middle scenario, 740,80727, using 370,40364 E and D or 50% of that cost. Whitman's operating assessment would be 16,93652927. Hanson would be 13,37210076. Last year's was, again, 16,10490322. Hanson, 12,64611772. An overall increase in the assessment of 831626 for Whitman. Hanson would be 72598304, or a 5.1% increase of the assessment in Whitman and a 5.76% increase in Hanson. Fully funding full-day K out of E and D, 74080727, offsetting it by the same amount. Whitman's operating assessment would be 16,71206467. Hanson would be 13,22616173. Again, last year, 16,10490322 for Whitman, 12,64611772. Whitman's operating assessment increase would be 60716145. Hanson's operating assessment increase would be 5804401 with a 3.7% or 3.77% increase of the assessment in Whitman and a Hanson increase of 4.59. Bottom line, the budget went up 3.7%. So thank you for listening. We have about 40-plus documents as well on the website. All of our line items are there. You have a packet, folks in the gallery have a packet. There's a tremendous amount of information there, and I'd ask you to review that. I'm open to doing line items like we've done in the past at another meeting and breaking it down. This is the initial budget, folks. This is something that I think I believe in, that my principals believe in, that'll put us on a path. We do have federal monies, and we are bringing people back into the budget. And we used, per the committee, we used all of that circuit breaker money into the budget this year. So there is no more left, so to speak. I know the committee talked about leaving some money in E and D for extended costs for issues next year. Again, we took the plan of right down the middle of using E and D. You can use more, you can use less. That's for discussion with this committee. I fully feel that we vetted what we have to, we had to do. We are living in a COVID world, and I'm hoping that we will be in the endemic phase of the pandemic come September. I'm hoping we're in the endemic phase by the end of this month. Everything looks better. Our numbers are down, but our kids are different, and it's hard to explain unless you're in the schools. And I know I have some teachers here, and I have some teachers in the gallery, and all you have kids, and they're a little different. Socially, they're challenged in different ways. They have to relearn how to be in groups. We've had to hire more pairs than I've ever seen just to do some one-on-one with kids when they, they can't be by themselves, or you can't trust them to walk down the hall. Our second graders haven't had a normal school year. So there's pieces. We built a budget around that and a strong academic base. Very proud of what we've done over the past couple of years by adding curriculum, adding staff members, lowering class size, things like that, things about what a school system's really about. Now it comes down to the dollars and cents and what you, as a school committee, want to put forward to the community. I know you have a difficult job. Your job has been harder these past two years than they've ever been, deciding on masks, who's getting in trouble for a mask. Are you going to come to school full-day, remote, hybrid, do all the, you know? And as a school committee, you've had to guide us. Our jobs have been much, much more challenging than I ever dreamed. Nobody taught this in superintendent school. Principals' jobs are harder, and the teachers are grinding. It's been a long year. We've provided them some supports to make sure that they can provide the best education for the children that are sitting in front of them. We're providing education through federal funds for our summer programs, for regression, and just for socialization. And we're providing after-school pieces for enrichment and for, to make sure our kids are in the best possible places. The interventionists that we have through SIR 2 and SIR 3 and through the district budget are working. The interventionists, it sounds like, oh, I'm going to do an intervention here. They're meeting all children. It's not just students that are, that were behind. They're meeting kids in the middle, and they're accelerating because we've committed to that this year. All students that have been affected by COVID. So that's our presentation, global view. We'll get to the nuts and bolts as we go. First time out. I appreciate your thoughts and feedback, and I'm open to questions from all of us. We might not have the answer right now. We might have to go digging in, but I'm open to questions and feedback from the committee.
So just as we, because I'm sure that's, there's a lot of information here, right? So I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions and comments. If the committee is so inclined, perhaps maybe we could spend kind of the first part of our time with questions, and then we can all make sure that we have an opportunity to provide comments, right? Because I think some of us will have some thoughts. Yeah, you want to come up here?
I'm just going to go back to my--
Some of us might have some thoughts on, hey, I think this, or I'm not sure I support this, but maybe if we could, if you're, if you're willing, maybe we could start with kind of the questions first of what do we want to see? And I want to make sure we kind of go around rapid fire because I have a feeling we might have some questions. So ask, fire away. To Jeff's point, you might have to take some stuff away, and then we can spend some time with comments, and then certainly do the same thing with the committee. So I see Beth's hand first. Fire away.
Okay. So Jeff, question for, probably for the public, too. I kind of know, but just so other people know, what do the interventionists do? Since they were brought up so many times, exactly what is their job?
Yep.
And so, because I think the public might not--
Yep.
It's a new term--
Very good question.
And so--
Sure. So our interventions we have at the elementary school, we have, we have district-wide at the elementary, and we have district-wide at the secondary. Right now, we have two district interventionists at the elementary district, one in math and one in reading. Those two people are responsible for the groups, the intervention people at the individual buildings. You will notice, if you remember, we had some retirements last year, and at the elementary schools, we had two reading specialists. We know, we changed that model. We changed that model. We changed some things in Title I and what we do for our students at separate, at different schools. And so now we have a math and a reading specialist or interventionist also at every school. So students now have the ability with their curriculum at the elementary school to have targeted pathways or targeted areas of assessment three times a year. That is in the beginning, that is sort of in the middle-ish January, and that is at the end. And from those, groups are made of students with similar, like, what? Similar like biar, not biar, similar like data points. So there might be the group that's struggling in early phonics. So you might take those students, who, those six or eight students, and they go and have a specific intervention for six to eight weeks. They might be the ones that are behind in math and two-digit multiplication, and you do that. So we've done that now in grades K to eight. At the secondary level, we have one interventionist overlooking both. The biggest highlight or the biggest glaring issue we have at the secondary interventionist model is that, one, we only have one person, and, two, we don't have a curriculum to support not only interventions, but we don't have a curriculum that actually is supporting students in the general ed classroom, all students. So that's why we're now highlighting the pieces of what is needed in the curriculum for kids, all kids to learn, so then we can see accurately what their deficits are to help them. Now, the goal of the intervention plan as we move forward is going to be less on individual groups of students being targeted and going with an adult, to more of the push-in intervention model. The push-in intervention model is one where the interventionists at the schools are now supporting the teams of teachers themselves, are going into the classroom to co-teach, are going and helping staff with the latest strategies for what we can do. Now, when a student is diagnosed after they take their formative, excuse me, their interim assessment three times a year, they go into tiers. There's a tier one. So a tier one is a student that might be on grade level or below grade level, let's say up to six months. A tier two intervention is we're going from six months to a year below grade level. A tier three is very intense. A tier three is you really have a small student-to-teacher ratio. You're really trying to find out, is this on the road to special ed, or is this something we can catch up because of deficits? What's taking place, not only because we've had a lack of curriculum, but also with COVID, is that all kids have gaps now. All kids have deficits that we're trying to move forward with. We even do this in the ninth and 10th grade with a system called IXL. In ninth and 10th grade, it's strictly just math and ELA, and then they try to have their groupings of teachers who, as a duty, would get this strategies-type skills class to help those small groups. But it's happening throughout the district. It's not something that we're looking to move away. This was not a COVID thing that somebody woke up and said, oh, my God, there might be students not reading at their grade level. This is something that's always taken place, but with the impetus of some federal-- This is something that's always taken place, but with the impetus of some federal funding, we were finally able to put in place. Remember, if you remember back to what Lauren and the folks did a few months ago, this came out of SAA, Every Student Succeeds Act. Not to confuse with SRR. SAA in 2015. We have only been able to implement it. We've started to talk about it, but we've only been able to implement it this year.
Great. Thank you. Other questions, other folks?
I had one more. Is that okay?
Uh, I want to, so what I'm hoping that we can do is give everyone an opportunity to ask a question. That way, we don't get stuff.
I have a follow-up, I guess, to that. So, I'm in a school. I'm a teacher, right?
Yeah.
The concern I have, I think the interventional, interventionists, my concern is using SRR funds that are going to expire to fund positions that I think we're going to need past 2024. Based on the experience that I see day-to-day. You know, we're looking at second graders right now who haven't had a traditional year of school. We're looking at fourth graders who have had these years. These kids are going to move to the middle school, right? So, research says that if there are certain pieces of learning that a student hasn't acquired, so reading, for example, because I teach English, the student has, hasn't reached the grade level of reading by fourth grade, they're never going to get there. Never is not the right word, but.
Much more difficult.
It's much more difficult for that student to do that. And I would imagine there are a number of students in our schools who are in grades, are not at grade level reading. And the concern that I have is we're using temporary funds to fund positions that I think we're going to need for long-term. And I know that might not apply to this budget, but it is certainly something we need to consider.
Right. And so, we've started to consider that and we have tried now. We're slowly trying to take one or two of those every year and move them back in. We're also looking at when the retirements take place. What is the position of that retirement? And can it be, are we looking at maybe three students more projected in a class? So that that person's role can change to retake the interventionist. The goal is not, the goal is not, I would love to say, hey, everybody's at grade level. Woo-hoo, great job. We don't need you. But that has never been in public education since the start of public education. So, the goal is to use this to foster it, to build it, and then to bring it into the budget through attrition and/or through different ways of using the people that we have.
Thanks.
You guys care if I ask a question? Can I ask a question?
Please.
So, no, so, because my question is really related to where you're going. So, one of the questions that I had, not, not specific to you, George, feel free to hang out, but it's not going to be specific to you. So, I think a lot of the things that I'm thinking about in terms of my questions are kind of more longer-term planning, right? And so, how do we make sure exactly what Hillary said, what we're getting through today, but we're also being thoughtful for tomorrow? So, is there a way, and I know we had already kind of talked about this, what I've seen other districts do, this came up at MASC, is they had every year, right? And then, they had the utilization of the funds. Because what I'm worried about is it's, there's seven slides. I appreciate the data. It's good. But my concern is it's really hard to figure out, well, what did we fund last year? What are we funding this year? What are we funding next year? And I think just kind of having that more in chart form, where we have the years and then we have the initiatives, is going to start to give us a sense of like, what are we seeing? Oh, we didn't even realize, you know, I didn't even realize we used 600,000 on these three positions. What are we going to do in FY '26 when there isn't federal funding? So, if we could maybe kind of have, I guess, that's my question. Is there a way to present the SRR in a chart form? So, when we get to next year, we also remember what do we put in this year? And when we get to the, and so on and so forth. Because otherwise, it's just, I'm really nervous about, we were taking money here to use to fund this, but that we already funded it there and what happens when all that goes away?
So, we can put that together.
Okay.
Like George had mentioned too, when we talked at SRR, SRR 3 last year.
Like one, two, and three, right? Because, right, there's a lot.
But remember, we fixed the budget a little bit by adding staff and adding SRR money. The rules hadn't even come out yet. They just said, hey, look, you're going to get 2.3, all of us went, great. So, yeah, we will do the best we can for next meeting. We'll put together a chart for you folks to show exactly where they're going. I have that same fear.
I think you already have the data. It's just presenting it in a manner that's probably easier for all of us to see. So, we can see what positions are added, when, and how.
I don't disagree. I think that the thing is, and I thank you for the interventionist piece, because it's needed. It's not a stopgap. And I think that's something we've done in our district over the 10, 10, 11, 12 years that I've been here is, is a stopgap and then it goes away. Or we hope that we can fund it somewhere else. I do believe through attrition, we're going to be able to solve some of that, but maybe not all of that. So, we'll put that together for the, for the next, for the next meeting or a meeting in the future.
Dawn and then Fred.
Thank you for that on avoiding the fiscal cliff, because that's really what we're talking about. And just being mindful of that. So important. I haven't looked through this yet.
Yep.
But is there a circuit breaker analysis that points out how that one time that we're now using towards this FY '23 is?
What do you mean, analysis?
Allocated here, the 1.7 million.
Where is it?
Right.
Yes, it is. It's in the line items.
Oh, okay.
So, in your, in that packet, you will see line items and where it was applied to.
Okay.
Is that correct, John?
Yeah, it's, it's applied to the sped tuitions, I mean, the line, the line. Just whatever the budget was, the sped tuitions. And then, minus 1.7.
Are you looking for something more specific, Don?
I, I think, yeah, let me try to phrase my question here because.
Don, can I take a crack at it?
One moment, please. So, the.
Because we did vote something at a previous meeting already that specifies kind of probably maybe what you're asking for.
Right. On the, on the last page, I guess it, it says that our budget, right, FY '23, overall general fund budget you're presenting,
Yep.
Is that less the 1.7 million or does 1.7 million come off that?
That 1.7 is already included in that budget number. So, it's been applied to sped tuitions already.
Okay.
Correct.
Minus.
Wait, is that what you're?
Yeah.
So, like, is, so, so the 1 point.
So, sped tuition would have been 5 point something or whatever.
Yep.
1.7 reduced that. This bottom-line budget has the circuit breaker already applied to the budget.
Okay. So, our budget is 58.9 million minus 1.7, so it's 57.2.
No, no, it's already been, it's already been placed in there. Correct.
Hold on a second, Chris.
Sure.
You go ahead, take a crack.
No, yeah, so that, I was going to go.
Still like to see some type of.
Well, so, what we had agreed upon, like we voted this, was as part of the budget process for FY '23 and going forward, there will be an appendix to the budget that a minimum includes sharing the assumptions relating to special education expenses. I don't see that.
Okay.
That's what we voted when we did the circuit breaker meeting. We said we needed to understand what are, because, right, because I think part of the, this is where we're going to need to spend some time. I'm not clear, maybe someone else is clear. But I thought what we talked about in circuit breaker was the circuit breaker, the special education expense needs comes out of the budget. Because we're going to have a direct offset to the circuit breaker expense over here. So, now, the question is, well, wait a second. If we just took 1.7 million out of circuit breaker expense out of the budget, how did that all play into the role of this, right? So, I think there's two things. One, what we agreed to already was there should be, there should be a detail of how do our special education expenses change, right? Because if, if it was, let's just say, 5 million and we're taking 1.7 out, then I would assume in this budget, it's 3.3. Or isn't it? Did it go up by 2 million? Like, we don't know, so.
Okay.
Is that?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, so the question is, did our budget increase by 3.7%? Or did it increase by 3.7% plus?
Plus.
The 1.7 million?
There you go.
Okay.
You know, where is that? Where are those dollars hiding?
Well, they're, they're in, they're not hiding, they're in the line items. So, I can clarify that piece of it, pull out that special education piece of it in those lines and show you. But the budget is.
Year-over-year difference?
That's what we mean.
Year-over-year? Okay.
I would.
Yeah, because that's how you, see, I don't know. I feel like the three of us are on the same page right now. How else would you know, right? If, I appreciate your question, because that's what I was trying to get at.
Well, no, no, and that wasn't even my question, but, or.
That's fine. We won't count it against you, Fred.
I got a whole page to have, yeah.
But does that make sense? Because it's just, it's kind of what we went through with the circuit breaker dialogue and all those questions of, this is where we are and that understanding, and that's what we need to understand. All right, great.
All right, so now I can.
Now, you can ask, sure, fire away, Fred. I don't see anyone else's hand.
Well, and you might as well start off, in relation to the SRR monies. It was my understanding that we've already spent SRR 2 and SRR 3 funds last year within our budget for this fiscal year that we're currently in. How much have we already spent within the SRR monies and are they available? And as a follow-up, didn't SRR 2, I believe it was, also contain a language that some of the funds had to be allocated? Was it 20% or 25% be allocated back to the towns to offset their assessment in some sort? Pretty sure there was some language in SRR 2 about that as well. But I'd have to look it up to be exact. But do we have a breakdown of what we've already spent?
Numerically?
It's not.
Numerically and by position?
I gave you that in the slides.
So, Fred, again, like, tell me if this isn't what you're asking. But like, what I'm hoping we can get for next meeting is a chart that says FY '21. Here's what was spent, here's what we, here's what we got, here's what we spent, here's where we spent it, FY '22. Here's what we got. So, we can see it every year. And that would also tell us for SRR 3, if we know there's 800,000 left.
Going back to day one.
Yes, yes.
So, you want a clarification of the slide that I presented?
Because I don't see.
Yeah, I mean, there's stuff.
It's hard to, it's hard to follow.
Oh, yeah.
I guess I'm having a hard time following it year-over-year.
Yes, yes, yes. The information is there, but to compare from year to year, to see our trends is not as clear as we would like it to be.
Okay. And that's what I meant by, I think you have all the information. I think it's just how it's being presented.
And to see exactly what positions have been funded, you know, what those are as well.
And it would be helpful too, I think, to see, so, if we're moving positions. So, like, if you funded with SRR 2, two interventionists, and then someone retired, so then you could take one of those interventionists out, right? Like, those pieces too, because then that, when it gets absorbed, right? And retirement is big money. That could be, you know, sometimes when someone retires, it's two positions you can get out of that or possibly more. So, that's also good information for us to have to see.
Yes. I will tell you that. I will know what my retirements are for next year after March 1st. So, that, I agree with you. And that's going to come in a little bit later. But we can clear that up with another slide, a little more clearer as you want.
I think that's where you probably get there though, right? Because if, I'm just, again, and this is, the slide I'm talking about is the one we saw at the MASC conference. It's literally, that's the slide. It's what the other districts have already done. But if it shows in FY '21, two interventionist positions at whatever X thousand dollars, and then FY '23 or '22, it shows zero being expended there, then that would answer her question that, okay, well, if we didn't use federal funds, then they're still there. Clearly, it was absorbed within the operating budget. So, I think that would help at least me, it sounds like maybe Fred and what they're asking for. Who else? So, hold on, you already, I'm trying to keep track of who's gone once.
Chris.
Chris hasn't, oh, Chris hasn't gone. I forgot about Chris. Chris.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Other questions before we go round two, another round, bartender? All right, Fred, go ahead.
Can I? I'm waiting, I was.
Or Beth, sorry.
I'll be real.
I thought you were pointing to Chris. I'm sorry. I didn't realize you were.
I thought Chris had, he had his hand up.
Got it. Thank you. Sorry.
Give my time to Beth.
This, well, Lauren. Okay. So, one of the hopes is to, I'm gathering, is to bring new programs to the school to keep students in here. So, do you have something in process, something in mind that will save money? Because the out-of-school placements are an extreme amount of money and would save a lot on the budget. So.
So, yes, we have currently, and with the two proposed programs, I feel all of the programs that we need to keep as many students in the district as possible. And our out-of-district coordinator and I work really closely together on students that we can bring back. And we have done that on many occasions over the last couple of years, bring students back to our programs. We also are able to keep students in district by having these programs. The tuition numbers, and I don't know what numbers you have, but just based on the number of our out-of-district students right now, which is 41, you'll see compared to last year, the tuition line is down. It's down from where it was last year. And I think that's a combination of a couple of things. I think it's the combination of just students either graduating out, hitting that, you know, hitting that 22nd birthday. We've had students move out. We've had a lot more kids in foster care and get placed in and out of the district. So, I think some of it is just students moving out, but some of it is also that we have been able to keep more students in district. Our number is a little bit down right now, which brings our tuition down right now. So, that's always the goal.
Yeah. Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay. And now, Fred? Fred, go ahead.
Uh, sure. Which one?
Time's up.
Grant, grant, no, I just, I was about to talk. Grant positions to the operating budget. Can we get a separate page that lists exactly how many that we are funding? And what they are and how much is being funded through grant positions? Or two grant positions, I should say, through, through grants? And I don't know about anyone else, it might be helpful to have, you know, the expiration, you know, if it's a one-year, two-year projection type of thing. It may overlap a little bit, you know, on some of the SRR, but it just takes that one subset and breaks it out.
I'm going to ask, I have a question from, so I don't know if David's on or if he's watching, but I do have a question from David. But he was asking about ARPA funds, because this is kind of in the line of the same thing. So, are ARPA funds available? What are we using? What have we used? So, maybe kind of, again, when we talk, I think.
I don't have any ARPA funds.
So, what have we used, right? So, what have we received from, through the towns in terms of any type of CARES Act, other funding? So, I think, like, to me, what I'm hearing is the understanding of the alternative funding sources that may or may not exist. Because that's, right, I think that's kind of where you're going even with the grant funds. If we have a grant today and we're using it to fund something today, but that grant's going to go away in year two, like, what is our long-term plan for those positions? So, whether it's CARES Act, grants, SRR, understanding where, what money.
Title whatever.
Yeah. I mean, if it's, if it's a title whatever and it's here forever, then it's titled here. It's, I don't think it's our permanent funding sources. I think it's the temporary funding sources that could change.
Can I just clarify a question?
Yeah.
So, it looks like you want to understand the alternate funding sources. But I guess my question would be is that for multi-year grants, that's, that's the biggest sticking point, correct? So, like, we get an IDA grant, we've got an IDEA grant, which is a special ed grant, which is funded basically the same number of people. It's on the chart, I can put in whatever way you want it. But that's like a year-to-year grant. So, you, you can project, because we've got five years at this, 13 people and 14 people and 15 people. But it sounds like the real confusion is on those multi-year grants, which is very confusing. Or do you want every single grant we get every year with a chart?
So, for me, federal funds, those are going to expire. I'm interested in seeing like what's expiring. CARES Act, what did we use, what's expired? Fred, I don't.
Well, I think everything, like the IDEA grant. Like, what happens if they stop funding it?
We're in trouble. Yeah, we're in trouble.
Right. So, how many people are we funding? It's year-to-year.
14.5.[1675.38]
14.5.
At least for us to be cognizant of it.
So, okay, so, okay, sure.
But is the ID, what is the likelihood that we're going to lose funding for the IDEA grant?
But, small. We have, we have...
Shouldn't we at least know about it?
Nope.
In the cognizant of it?
Yeah.
Okay, sure. So I'm going to probably do all grants, then.
That's, that would be my hope.
Do all? I'm sorry, I might not understand the scope of this.
That's a lot.
Yeah, I don't...
Yeah, so, so, so I think, the essence of my question is monies that are going to run out, I'd like to understand when they're going to run out. So I'm going after the fiscal cliff of, I don't want to wake up, right, we use this for CARES, we use this for ESR, we use this for ESR two.
So I'm, I'm with you. I have, I have everything you're saying, I, I got that.
Fred, I think is asking for grants, so you can clarify.
In addition to yours, but also just to know, what are we funding with grants? What positions, and when do the grants end?
The grants are yearly, that's my question, so, so we have a plethora of...
It could be one spreadsheet that lists out what positions are being funded on annual grants.
Different than what I just showed you.
Correct.
Okay. So I'm going to try my best to answer your questions.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think with the grants, it might be different in terms of, again, the committee can kind of decide what we want to do here, but for me, grant funding, that there's a reasonable expectation that's going to continue, I'm not as concerned about for our budget planning purposes. I think it's a good informational purposes, but to me, it's not going to change a budget decision. It would be like saying, chapter 70 is going to go away.
Title one, IDEA going away, I'm not worried about that today.
Okay, but, for instance, take EL. Okay, so now we're considered a moderate district, as opposed to a low-impact, hopefully I'm using the right terminology. Is there a difference in how we're funded? Or we get grants?
If, if we become a moderate, so, right now, if we, that's the Title III federal grant. The Title III federal grant comes in the federal workbook, which is four yearly grants. Title I, which we've had for years, Title II, Title III is EL, and Title IV. Roughly, to give you ballpark figures, we get about 379 in Title I, 379,000. In Title II, we get 72,000. In Title III, we get a portion of the seven districts in North River Collaborative, because until recently, we were all under 100. So North River Collaborative would write, the, the state allows you to do it if you're a low-incident district, they would write the Title III grant, and we'd get a portion of it, roughly 10 to 12,000. Title IV has been shrinking, that's the one on safety and security, SEL, and that's about 24,000. No people come out of that. So, that, so Title III might change. I don't know that designation, because that only comes out in June. So the federal workbook of those four grants, one, two, three, and four, is due September the 15th. It comes out, depending, anytime from June 15th to about August the 6th, and then you have a month to get it in and get that done. So I can, I can show, I'll show you the yearly grants, and I'll show you how many people, and the total price and payroll, and then I'll show you the multi-year grants, like, separate, hopefully with, like, the years that we've used them. That sound? Ballpark?
Yeah, I mean, that's fantastic, just, like, I never understood that there was a Title III, until just now.
Yeah, because we've never really had it.
So you're still teaching.
Yeah, that's it. I'm here for everybody, all right? No problem.
Other questions? Don?
So, getting back to the slide on what ESR III can be used for, I don't have a number, but, so it does refer to more one-time expenditures as opposed to staff, right? So, equipment, so the second page, additional ESR III uses, supplies, materials, textbooks, equipment. I, I wouldn't necessarily advocate for that, because I know our students come first, and the staff that you have put in place right now is supporting them, and that's absolutely number one. But just being cognizant of their, you know, this, this budget right now is FY '23, so we're looking at the support staff needed, but as we move towards the next year, and it goes back to that grid, too, you know, maybe taper off, maybe looking at what, you know, one time, we can begin to phase into that fiscal cliff, if you will, right? So this is maybe more of a comment than a question for you. Just being aware of what other one-time needs our district may have, that might be capital-related, that this could fund, if we find, based on this FY '23 services we give to students, maybe we can start to reduce those. You talk about the retirements, and, you know, being able to replace those with, you know, move some of these staff positions that are funded by these one-time monies into regular operating budget. So I'm just thinking that way. But I, I really want to say thank you for this, this is, this is really fantastic, this, this presentation and these slides and this information, haven't looked through this. One other question, just in regards to our classroom supplies, and, and those line items, and I haven't looked through the line items, but we all know, I think, that everything we're buying in stores is going up, right? Eight to 10%, we hear that. You go to the supermarket, you're buying things, just everything costs more. So I don't know if you've allowed for that, for our classroom supplies, the books, the things teachers need to just run on a daily basis, and we could talk about that maybe next week, or so forth, but I'm just thinking, that's going to be an expense, right, when we go to buy those things next year.
Yes, you'll see, you'll see pieces of that, you'll see in utilities, that utilities went up, especially electric went up quite a bit, fuel, things like that are in those line items. And that's why you're seeing an increase in, in the dollar amount.
And, and thank you for following through on your goal of full-day kindergarten, it has never been presented in a budget before, so I really, I wish there were parents here to really support it, but I think they're home, cooking dinner, and taking care of those babies, they don't know what may, is the potential here to realize this. The, the town of Whitman does have the most half-day kids in the state. Town of Whitman, I'm sorry, the district of Whitman-Hanson has the most half-day kids, 78. There's no other town on the South Shore, or in the state, so...
I missed that, sorry, we have the most what?
The most students, five-year-olds, in our half-day kindergarten program, we have 78.
Oh.
And there are only 23 other school districts in the state that have half-day kindergarten programs. This is on the DESI website, and they all have less than that, so...
Do we know by percentage, what percentage of the population?
It's the highest percent also. Yes, it is. Braintree is the next, with 63 kids, and they have 399 kindergarten, half-day kindergarteners, so their population is a lot higher. So we have the highest percentage of five-year-olds going half-day, and there's no better time than now to get this done. No better time.
Thank you.
Fred, yeah?
It was presented on our budget back in 2016, I believe, and failed at the ballot box. So it has been presented and gone forward, it just unfortunately was not passed by the towns.
What wasn't passed? The budget?
Full day K. What was the student upper, uh, student success budget?
It was an override, though.
On an override.
Right, so, it was part of the override?
It was part of the override.
Part of the override, yeah.
And that failed in both towns. By Whitman, by a smidgen, and Soundly and Hanson. School choice. Of the students that are in school choice, do we know how many are in full-day K, or going to full-day K, and also perhaps in charter as well? How many of those students are actually opting out because we don't offer full-day K?
Off, off the top of my, the sending, where we send kids out?
Yes.
I have the dollar amount, I don't have the names of the kids or the breakdown yet, I can get that.
Be very curious as to see that.
Charter school and school choice?
Yep.
And you want to see breakdown of grade level?
Grade level would be fine, just very curious as far as, you know...
Impact on kindergarten.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Fred. Anyone else? Other questions from other folks? Yep?
I just have a clarifying question. So, on the teacher-student overall ratios, that comes from the DESI profile, it says that our teacher-student ratio is 14.6 to 1, which is an average for the district, but when you go to the projected class sizes, and I know that is last year, I don't think any of those numbers average that, so my understanding of this, and this is a, a more comment and clarifying question for the community to understand, this isn't teachers, this is staff at a school.
That's correct.
So that's really important for people to understand. It looks like we are, wow, my kid is in a class of four, like, this is amazing, and that is not accurate, and I think it's really important that people understand that. It counts all staff in a school building, in this ratio.
Yes.
I, I know the answer to that. I just want to make sure that everybody knows the answer to that.
A pretty substantial clarification.
That's why, when you go and you look on the DESI profiles, it makes things look amazing, and then when you work in the industry, you realize what is actually happening, because, I mean, I'm not, I teach English, obviously, and these numbers don't add up, so it's important for people to understand, you know, if, you know, if there's questions about where money's being spent, and, you know, my kid, it says we have a 14.6 to 1 ratio, but my kid's in a class of 22, what is going on here, right? And I, I think that that, it's a little disingenuous of the, of DESI, not the district reporting, of DESI's reporting, and how they get their...
I've never agreed with it.
I was given a different explanation when I asked that question. Years back, I was told that it also took into account some of the one-on-one and one-on-two teachers.
Yes, it does.
And that was why that ratio was so skewed. Not, it didn't take into account all the employees within a...
I, I guess, I guess, Fred, what I mean is, when you look at teacher-to-student ratio, my understanding of a teacher is someone who has a teaching license, and paraprofessionals don't have teaching licenses, right? And so that counts paraprofessionals in this as well, and, and the, the number's just not accurate.
The numbers are not accurate.
That's all I'm trying to say.
We'll leave it at that, that's good, that'll be good. Just, so one, oh, go ahead, yeah, and I guess we're already evolving to comments, so if folks have comments, too, because I want to get to public comment, too.
I just want to make one comment on the whole harmless. As part of the Student Opportunity Act, that is a number that increases annually, so it started at $20 per pupil. They skipped a year, we ended up at $30 this year, it'll increase $40 next year, and then top off at 50 under the Student Opportunity Act. So it is going to increase, but then when it reaches 50, it'll stop. And I just wanted to clarify that from the earlier conversation.
And just using the math, Fred, I think you'd agree that it's still not a material amount when considered against the overall budget. So if you're talking about 30 times 3,500, or 50 times 3,500, that's really not moving the needle at all in terms of taking the burden off of the towns, opposed to looking at state funding, so unfortunately. One thing, I guess, as a comment that would help me, again, because this is kind of, I already prefaced kind of the long term, so in our summer meetings, we had talked about the priority of full-day K, and why that was important, and we had also talked about outreach and doing some of that, so I think between now and town meetings, I don't think we've done a lot of that up to that point, in the terms of the understanding of what that is, and why it's important, and the whole early childhood concept, I, I'm hoping we can do some of that. But the, the question I'd like to understand as part of the budget process, and this is exactly same with the ESR funding, is what does that look like long-term, right? So if we're going to take a whole bunch of money out of END to fund first year, what do we think that's going to look like next year? Because those same funds may not be available at END. So, to me, there's nothing more important than early childhood education, it's, I'm in full support of doing it, but again, I want to make sure we understand the decisions we make today, and how they're going to impact us tomorrow. So if we could kind of play that out in terms of, okay, this is how we're funding full-day K this year, but this is how we think, and some of that might naturally flow into some of the, I know John started to work on, and we're trying to get in the budget subcommittee kind of a, a long-term, this is what the next three years, big, so that might flow in, but I just think it's going to be, I, I don't know, for me, it's going to be important to understand.
Absolutely.
It's super important, and I think we need to do it, but what does that long-term implication look like, so? Other questions from the committee before we open it up to public comment?
One last question.
Sure. You said it was last, okay. We got, this is recorded, you told me to make sure it was recorded, we got it.
Aside of full-day K, the budget shows a 3.7% increase, plus the difference within the circuit breaker monies. Is that level services, or is there other things that are, that are within the budget?
It, it, it's level services plus, so we included the two special education teachers Lauren talked about, okay, for that high school program, and that middle school program, autism program, and it includes teachers moving from ESR III or ESR II back into the budget. So there's an interventionist in there, there's two special education teachers that we funded last year, and a middle school, excuse me, a K-5 middle, uh, special education coordinator, the K-6, Michelle Aaron's position, that was funded in ESR when I put up that 775 last year on the board. We moved some of those people into the LEA budget to try to get that, to try to get them in before we hit the financial cliff, okay?
Just trying to understand what that represents.
And, and you can see those in the line items, as you go, you'll see a percentage increase in the line item, so it might be a, an additional salary at Whitman Middle School, you might be additional salaries at Conley in the district, you will see those in the line item.
Is it possible to get those broken out as well?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so in the past, we've done it differently, in that I think we, right, we talked about this, we opened the public comment at the beginning of the meeting, and then we closed the public comment, and there wasn't a lot of public comment, because we hadn't, you hadn't presented the budget yet, so we'll now open it to public comment, so can I get a, a motion to open the public hearing on the school budget?
Oh, second.
Great. David, are you on? No, okay, so I'm going to hang this up, because I think he's watching remotely. So we will, we won't go to roll call vote, so this will be a, all those in favor? Great, thank you. So, we will open it up to the public comment, there will be additional public comment, just come up to the form of, feel free to form a socially decent line, just give us your name, address, and please.
Do I talk into both of these?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Kathleen O'Teener, I'm on the Whitman Finance Committee, I'm the liaison to the schools, and I think this is a great first meeting, there's an incredible amount of information that's presented tonight, overwhelming for a first sitting, but extremely detailed, and I, I thank you for saving the transportation portion of the budget to next week, I can't wait to spend another night out with my family, but I'll be here next week to talk about the trans, to listen to you explain the transportation as well. But I think this, as I said at the, my last time I came to this meeting, this is a move in the right direction, where information is presented to the community, more information is better than less information, and then there's the opportunity for people to question things, as opposed to wonder what's going on, and what, you know, a 10-page piece of information doesn't begin to cover a $58 million budget, and this is a $58 million budget that you folks and the administration have to manage. So I really appreciate all of the work that went into preparing this, the people behind the scenes, the people here tonight, and look forward to seeing you on a regular basis.
Randy Lamatina, Six River Burt Circle, Selectment, Town of Whitman. I just have a couple brief comments, questions and comments, you may have to save them, more information. First one would be for Mr. Stanbrook on document 16. And this would relate back to the circuit breaker compensation, so I think you guys voted 1.7 million coming out. So if you look at his FY '23 budget, where he has the...
Hold on one second, I just want to make sure everyone has it, because, everyone on the school committee got there? Hold on, one second, one second. We, I haven't even made it to the page, Randy, so just give us, I, I got there, but I want to make sure everyone else got there. It's like, bottom left-hand corner, three-quarters of the way through. Kind of looks like this.
16, you said?
Orange.
Yeah, document 16.
Bottom left, it says doc 16.
13, 14.
Almost there, sorry, Randy.
17.
All right.
It should look like this.
Haven't even looked at this.
Okay.
Everyone got it?
17.
All right, fire away, Randy, thank you.
All right, just in this, where he has possible assessments, and he seems to break out transfer, you know, possible transportation costs, where in previous years, you had listed the circuit breaker, which was voted by the school committee, but this has zero. So I, I go back to that question, is where did you, how exactly was the circuit breaker calculated? Because to my understanding, and I thought we, we kind of beat this to death, is those costs should have been actually pulled out of the budget, and an offset should have been shown, correct?
Yeah, I think if you have an answer, go, might as well.
Pull up document six.
Let's wait to it.
Page six.
Give us one second, one second.
Four.
It's like maybe a third, a quarter of the way through, bottom left.
Five, six.
Good.
Six.
All right, sorry, go ahead.
So if you go to document six, page nine?
Yep.
Oh, you fooled us.
Subsection B.
All right, got it.
Page nine?[1689.98]
Page 9.
It's after 8, right?
Come on. Okay. Oh, I see it right there. There it is.
All right, John.
I'd, I'd love to hear an explanation.
We're ready, John. We're ready. Come up to that mic.
Oh, we need to hear.
Yeah, but no, we're going to need to hear.
I'd like to hear the explanation if I could.
Thank you. So you're on page 9 of document 6.
Yep.
The last page, um, after, under the heading where it says 9,100 total tuition to mass schools.
Yep.
If you look up a bit where it says total expenses.
Yep.
Then you look up one line for district-wide sped tuition to other schools. And if you go over in fiscal year '21, the actual is 3.9. Uh, there were no encumbrances. Fiscal year '22, the appropriated amount is 4.5 million. We've spent 1.7 through December. And then you see in the fiscal year '23 budget line, it says 2.6, a decrease of 1.9 million. That's 1.72 of that is that, that's where the reduction in circuit breaker came from. Um, and the original number there was 4.3 something. So it's 4.3 minus the 1.72. So it wasn't shown in the revenue side, and it wasn't shown in the expenditure side. So, but it did come out. Awesome.
Yeah. Uh, Ben, quick question on S R 2. Uh, your total of $1,1704, was that total S R 2? All right. So I, I would go back to, it was either a May or June document handed out by the interim business manager that in either May or early June, you had expended 701,277.65. So if you had received a million and back in June, you had expended 700,000, I, I guess I would ask, how much? And, you know, could we possibly get a breakout of cost on those?
Well, I think that's what you asked.
So Randy, I'm hoping we can get that chart that shows like, here's what it was, here's what was spent, here's what we received. I'm hoping that'll get us to the same place.
Then my next comment's on S R 3. Um, last year, when we put the budget together, when you guys put the budget together, we had a gap of, uh, knowing that we were going to need some interventionist. I believe it was four. Uh, there was a curriculum and possibly uh, some type of administrative position, I believe. I'm, don't quote me on that. But there was a commitment made that we put 750 in last year, knowing that the interventionalist would probably be lasting more than just one year. And the commitment by the superintendent was 750, 750, 750. This seems like a, a pretty drastic change where now you're not looking ahead saying, we know we're going to need the interventionalist, but now it's find another way to pay for it. And that just wasn't how it was sold. So I, I would ask that to be looked into as well.
Do you understand the question?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I don't.
As long as you understand it, you can...
So, so last year, when we, we proposed the budget, there was a gap, and we committed S R 3 money to that.
Right.
Using S R 3 over three years.
Yep.
The challenge right now, and we'll show you that, is that we have some S R 2 money available that we used as well.
That's what George...
So we will, we will show you that information
Yep.
Going forward. I understand the question.
Gotcha.
I understand the comment.
Okay. Can we hold it for after the public comment? Okay. Go ahead, John.
Hi, Sean Kane, 31 Forest Street. Um, I just want to put in a plug for, well, first, thank you for this. This is excellent. I appreciate all the work that's gone into it. I would like to put in a plug for the financial forecast. And one of the reasons why I think it's so important for our district is because we mentioned the whole, the hold harmless scenario. And I, it's very difficult, even for me, as much as I've looked into it, it's still hard to, to understand how that really affects such a big budget. You know what I mean? Proportionally, we're not gaining as much as we otherwise would if we weren't in the hold harmless scenario. And with the declining enrollment, I think it's really important that we do, you know, based on assumptions, realistic assumptions, have a forecast that says, listen, if this happens, then next year, three years out, maybe five years out, to see, you know, kind of how our budget is affected. Because we don't have a typical budget. You know what I mean? So to make such big decisions, or to make decisions without a, a financial forecast, it feels, is lacking to a degree because we don't quite know how the budget's going to be affected in the next two years. So if we're adding a new, especially if we, you're thinking about using E and D for a new program, as much as everything in my heart says we need that program, obviously, we need to be careful about how we fund it because if we, maybe given the worst-case scenario, you could add to a budget and the gap could be, be greater. You know, you could be inflating, unintentionally inflating the budget if you're not careful with some of the dynamics at work, and they're extremely complex. So putting in some work to figure that out, to create somewhat of a realistic scenario moving forward would help clarify some of those, certainly for me, some of those questions. Um, I, I would just say, just to complement that real quick, Whitman has recognized full-day K. It's still a draft strategic plan, but it sounds like, seems like it's going to be adopted soon. And I think the, the leadership in Whitman has recognized the importance of that program. They've also recognized the importance of creating sustainability with our budgeting. You know what I mean? So I think that would be a good compliment to, to their, it's one of their priorities as well, financially.
Thank you, Sean. Go ahead. Do you want, do you want John to respond?
John, you want to respond to that forecasting a little bit to Mr. Kane?
Thank you. Just in response to the previous speaker, that in your packet documents 15 and 16, my first attempt at a three-year look back, current year budget, and then six-year look forward. So fi, our, um, document 15 is the, um, the assumptions that I've made, and document 16 are the actual numbers with the, based on those assumptions. And we've been working with the budget subcommittee, um, talking about that for a while now, and this is the first attempt at it.
Yeah, it's great because we were able to talk about a template, but I think we were cognizant of not putting numbers in until we actually did this.
Right.
So now it'll be good to go through that. Thank you, John.
Justin Evans, 57 Candlewick Lane in Selectment Town of Whitman. Um, Sean couldn't have set me up better for this question. Uh, so tuition-free full-day K is in the draft strategic plan for Whitman. Um, I've been looking at how other towns kind of handled the implementation of full-day K, and a lot of them did opt to use one-time money for the first year, knowing that chapter 70 reimbursements kick in a little bit down the line once your full-day students are counted as, or your half-day students are counted as full-day students. My question is, is Whitman Hansen going to see that same kind of relief because of our hold harmless number?
I believe, and I'm going to quote John, we will not because we, because, because we're in that hold harmless state. So the question, John, is if, if, I'm correct, we won't see that.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want, I did ask, uh, one of the Robs that quest, that very question about four years, five years ago.
Yeah.
And exactly the same. You'll see the bump in the number of students.
$30 a kid.
Well, or $15 if they're a half that they are not, but it's negligible.
Okay. Any other public comment? And I'm sure we will have additional public comments at future meetings relating to the budget. So, um, great. Thank you for those that came and that, um, asked questions and provided comments. Please continue to do that. It's important. It helps us kind of understand different perspectives. Um, so I would be looking for a motion to close public comments.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? None. Great. All those in favor? All right. Great. Okay. So I think that brings us to what was our last agenda item.
Yep.
Um, and so this one, this was something that came up that was a little time-sensitive, otherwise it wouldn't be on here. So Dawn had reached out with this idea to revisit the concept of having an outreach coordinator, um, and asked about putting it on the agenda. Uh, I had reached out to Jeff. We had a conversation about what that would look like. And basically, the coordinator would be to help that student advisory committee. And the scope would really be to review our agenda with them, help make sure that they understand items that should not be discussed by students, you know, specifically any type of speech, teacher issues, kind of review their presentation time because when we get to that, um, they're going to have about 15 minutes to present. So not telling them what to present, but making sure that they kind of have an understanding of, if they have 15 minutes, maybe they don't have 45 slides, something like that, just to do that. Um, and then I think Jeff's thought with that was basically they would meet the Monday before our meeting. So the student outreach, or I'm sorry, the outreach coordinator would meet with the student advisory committee the Monday before our meetings, make sure they were all set. Jeff would be a part of that meeting. And so we looked at this, and basically, um, the regulation when we did the student advisory committee says that the stu, the school committee may elect to have a student outreach coordinator. So I bring that to you. Dawn is interested in doing it. Um, I don't know if others are interested in doing it, in which case we can go through a voting process. I think Jeff, you're in support of this, whether it's Dawn or someone else. Um, so I would open that up to the committee in terms of whether our motion, um, to appoint Dawn, and we can then talk about others as, as an outreach coordinator.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to have Dawn be appointed.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Great. Additional discussion? Yes.
I almost think it may be a function of the chair.
As?
As to being that outreach coordinator. I mean...
Yeah, I mean, I think to, so personally, I would support Dawn in what she's trying to do. Uh, I think anytime we have a committee member that wants to do something, that the superintendent says that's going to help me and us, I'm all for it.
I would just like to see the chair's input with whoever the, the outreach coordinator is from the school committee. Yes.
You're going to have to give me more.
In other words, have whoever the outreach coordinator is work, work with the chair, you know, with the agendas and...
So, so I guess, I guess my, yeah. So I think to clarify, it's their agenda. They're not, they're...
It's our school committee agenda.
So, yeah, there's two agendas. So one, it's our agenda that we would have already published.
Right.
So it's, hey, this is what we're going to talk about. This is kind of what you have to pay attention to if you want to stay for the meetings. That's for the kids, the students. And then it would be them coming up with an agenda for what they're going to present at our meeting and just kind of, again, making sure like, hey, you got 15 minutes, you got 25 things on the agenda, or what's important. So
Right.
That's kind of the concept.
But what I'm saying is it should be done in conjunction with the chair. That's, that's just an opinion.
I can't say I agree, but I'm hoping, if you want to make an amendment, we can, we can handle it that way.
You know, I make a motion to amend that it's done in conjunction with the chair for setting the school committee agenda. As to the, uh, student portion.
Okay. And the superintendent is going to participate, just so you know.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm there. I, I'm there facilitating
Yeah.
And getting the kids together. Yeah, it's not
Okay.
It's not just a, I think a lot of kids might be like, who's this person, you know? And I, so I'm going to facilitate that piece of it. Um, we'll do it by Zoom. Anybody, you know, wants, if, if it's not Dawn, whatever, it doesn't have to be in person. But really, to me, it's, it's the, it's the school committee person meeting the students and then kind of saying, this is what you can say at a school committee meeting and not, and the agenda's formed. So we're going to have the agenda out on Friday and then have the, maybe the students ask the question of, you know, or, or the representative kind of goes through what's on the agenda and why, and provide the, the comment piece of it. But I'm there.
And maybe I didn't articulate the way my brain's trying to work anyways, clear enough. We have X amount of time. The chairs and
15 minutes.
Coordinators.
We've already, yeah, we agreed, they have 15 minutes.
But there may be something that's more important than 15 minutes.
They have...
That you would say, you know something? That's a really good thing to be on the school committee.
Yeah, no, no, but I think, Fred, I think
That type of thing.
I think we're all going to monitor that. I mean, I, look, I don't think it's, you know, we've done this enough that I don't think it's going to be 15 oh one, you're, you're done. Um, I think we can all gauge that. Um, but I, I think it'll, I think it 'll work. We can try it for this year. But again, so if you, are you making a amended motion or not?
Yeah, I'll draw the note.
Any other discussion? Great. All those in favor?
You're it, Dawn.
Unanimous. Great. Thank you, Dawn. Good luck. Thank you for volunteering to do it. Okay, that concludes all of our agendas. So...
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor? Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.